What's up? Vestavius Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda as displayed on the screen. Do we have a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to approve the minutes from the last meeting on July 2nd, which were distributed beforehand. Do we have a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is Dr. Franklin.
Financial statement. Ms. Brown.
Good afternoon. I have provided the June 2019 financial statements and check register for your review. I would like to comment on a few items. The local tax revenue collections are at 97% as of June 30. At this date in July, we have received 98% of our budgeted amount, and we have two months remaining, so we are on track to receive 100% of our budgeted local revenues by year end. And our total expenditures compared to budget are at 82% as of June 2019, compared with 78% in the prior year. The reason for this variance from last year is because the transfer to the debt service fund for our June 2019 payment has been made currently, and in the prior year it was not made until year end. So when you add this amount back to the June 2018 expenditures, we were at 81% of budget last year, which is comparable to 82% right now. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of June 30, 2019.
Would projecting quarter surplus in general fund above our budget estimates?
I'm not sure at this stage. I think we're pretty flat right now.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. For members, I recommend we approve the financial statement for June 2019.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Submit.
To a second.
Second.
Any questions? Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five, I recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state field trips and overnight trips for presenters, high school, and student transfers.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Under unfinished business, I recommend the board approve policy 5.18, drug and alcohol testing in safety-sensitive employees as submitted. And I would note that the first reading of this was June 24, 2019.
Per the superintendent's recommendation on drug and alcohol testing, do we have a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? This was presented before, held for the representees period.
Just for informational purposes, Dr. Martin, would you explain what the safety-sensitive employee is?
Sure. Safety-sensitive employee, anyone that uses a school-operated vehicle. So that would be anyone on our main unit staff, bus drivers, those individuals.
Good point to make, because that's a federally-defined position, so that separates we're all safety-sensitive. I suppose in some ways we've not afforded the federal law.
Start all in favor?
Aye.
And the personnel, I recommend a board approve personnel actions as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation on personnel, do we have a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second?
Okay.
Any questions? All very standard, kind of summer.
Are we about done? Are we about to go to our positions still?
We're not quite there. We had even this morning, I think, a resignation, so we are really close. Some of our schools are completely there. You know, possibly how many positions are open?
I want to say there's two certified, and we may have three pairs out there, so...
Yeah, I was made aware of two things, actually, this morning, that I heard after our teaching rotation. We are watching some numbers, kindergarten through fifth in particular, just keeping an eye on those principals will be... They're watching really close, particularly as kindergarten starts rolling in, so if we have to make some decisions there, that's possible.
And anecdotally, from what I've heard, is that our candidate pool's been really strong this year.
Yeah, it's been great. We've gotten a lot of experienced teachers.
Yeah, it's great.
The good problem's hard for principals to look through every one of those that come through. But we have today, I think, 35 new teachers that we have in orientation. It's a stellar group, so it's also doing good work.
Any other comments, Terry? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And now, Super.
I'll walk over, Kim, look at this with you. What I wanted to provide, board members, is a review of the strategic planning process. And I'd just give everyone some context in terms of why we're here today, because one of the agenda items is the request to approve strategic planning goals. So I thought I'd walk through the process with you that led us to this point today, talk about the goals themselves, what the rationale is behind each of those goals, and what we do moving forward. And I'll embed, as part of this presentation, goals that I have said, this is part of our relationship with superintendent and board, is that I set annual goals. And so those that are consistent with the work of the strategic plan, so I'll share all of that with you as well today before we take a request for approval. All right, so we started the process...
Turn it on.
We started the process in January with a group called Schlecty Center. And Schlecty Center is a group of thought leaders in education who, for many years, under the leadership of Phil Schlecty, who was a noted author for many years before his passing in the world of education, educators definitely know who Phil Schlecty is. And his center has done for many years work on creating engaged classrooms, engaged schools, working with communities. And so, working with Dr. George Thompson, who is the executive director of Strategic Initiatives with Schlecty Center, we pulled this team together, which consisted of our principals and some of our central office staff, to have a conversation about our strategic plan. The current plan that we have, it was built in 2013. Many in this room were part of that process, either as an employee or as part of a stakeholder group, and built what I think was a fantastic strategic plan, particularly the mission and beliefs. And so, from my perspective as a new superintendent last year, it's evident to me that there was great buy-in with mission and beliefs, and that's not something we needed to recreate. That seemed to be the essence of our school system and community. So we wanted to keep that in place, and really more emphasize what are these few things that we could really focus on as a strong school system that would be difference-makers. And so we would not have elaborate, long amount of goals, but some that we really want to zero and tight on. And that is what led to the idea of pulling together what amounted to be 54 different stakeholders to a discovery process. And those stakeholders consisted of representatives in the community that were parents, school teachers, our administrative team. We had eight students from the high school that I think all would agree were a valuable part of this whole process to have. And thought leaders from around the city, those that represented different industries of trade and business, those from Chamber, those from city council representation or the city government. And we pulled together what I thought was a tremendous group of folks to have a conversation about our school. And what we basically did for two days is to look at ourselves. And so we did an audit of the capacity of our system, where are the things that we seem to be performing well, where are there some weaknesses or soft spots that we want to focus upon? We looked at the history of our system. We're going to be turning 50 years old next year, and so for this 50-year period almost, what are the defining moments in our history that have led us to where we are today? How does that shape our thinking moving ahead? And so, when we did those exercises, we concluded after two days and determined that we wanted to spend some more time with different focus groups. So during the month of March, we met with 11 different focus groups that were parents, teachers, and students, and had great conversation with them about all things that Vestavius Hills City Schools. And we just listened to them talk about the schools and framed their perspective about how we're doing and where we need to work. This was 44 people, I believe, participated in this exercise, and it was a great two days of just listening to additional stakeholders. In addition to that, around the time that we had our focus groups meeting in March, our accreditation report came in, and it offered a few recommendations, which you've heard before, you heard that in our April board meeting, about places that we could focus upon and really try to grow and improve our school system. So we had a lot of data points to work with. And so what we did in April is we reconvened a smaller discovery team, and that was about a little less than half of that 54 was a part of that group that sat in this room for a couple of days, and began to develop and take our data and say, where do we want to focus our energies? And we came up with some concepts to do that. And then in late April, we had a small group of six people, I was a part of a group of six people, Ms. Weber was a part of that group, that we started to lay down the wording of what we would want a draft goal to look like. And we had three draft goals put in place at that time. And so, we vetted it a little further at that point, two ways. One, I spent some time with my, what I call my student advisory team at the high school, that's Kim Bruce's leadership team, that I first allowed me to meet with periodically during the year, and just bounce these ideas off of them. And that was good information for me as much as anything. But we reconvened the discovery group, this entire group, almost all came back. And even some of the students that had graduated came back in the summer, and we had more conversation. And at that point, we began to look at the goals themselves and the rationales, and what we call a picture of success. In other words, what would our plan look like if we do all of these things the way we want to? And we critiqued those and came up with a lot of different wording and language changes we wanted to make. Then I brought that team of six back in June, and we fashioned our goals and our rationales and our picture of success based on that input, and then brought that to you, of course, on June 24th in the form of our workshop that we did. So you've seen that process. And that's what led us from a period of about six months into this. The thinking about the strategic plan, as I said, started last year, but knowing that we had a good plan, and we can... I think many of you who participated in that 2013 know how extensively it was developed. Dr. Ernst Berger would agree with that. She was one of the team members that sort of led some of the exercises, and most administrators at that time were here. But many administrators have changed since then, so there's... And many board members have changed since then. So we wanted to make sure it still had the flavor of what we think's important, but to focus on three goals. And so, I've talked to you about the mission statement, but it bears repeating again, because I think that that phrase in there about learning without limits is what perpetually you hear most of. It is the expectation that the Vestavius Hills City Schools will ensure that each student learns without limits by pursuing knowledge and adding curiosity about the world through these five different pillars. And so using that, that's sort of the basis point of how we would start our conversation anytime a strategic plan. Our beliefs remain to be the same. I think they are the essence of our community, and I'll have to speak personally, that when I saw this before I ever applied for the position of superintendent, I was just captivated by how it spoke to things that appealed to me as a parent and as an educator and as a community person. I felt like it just captured the richness of what is Vestavius Hills City Schools. So I believe it's very strong, and I would put that belief system up against anybody's, because I really think we actually live that belief system in our schools. So when you've got a basis like that and a framework, we could work with these three goals. I'd like to read them to you. And then I'm going to use some of my, I guess, some of my Southern Baptist background and try to give you three points for each one of these to maybe capture the essence of what they are. The first goal is to ensure that students learn and demonstrate a profound understanding of knowledge and skills consistent with expectations of teachers, parents, and the community, and ensure that students find value and meaning in the work provided to them. It was a very lofty goal, but the discovery team noted several things about the system that we wanted to think about raising the name of our academic achievement. You all have heard ad nauseam about how successful our students are, and that never gets old bragging about. I look forward to August to sharing with the Chamber and the community about all the accolades our senior classes earned and what our system has done. So it can be difficult for a high-performing system to find a place to grow. But the discovery process helped us, I think, refine that. And I would say three things largely shape this conversation. The first one is policy, which is the work of the board education. So does our policy manual, is it set up in such a way that creates opportunities for students to learn without limits, to develop a profound understanding of knowledge and skills? So that's an important process and not an easy one, because when you're a policymaker, you set the ripple effect of everything else that goes on. But we know that some of the limitations that our students face is going to be based on policies that are in place that might limit their ability to do something. I'll give you an example. It is very difficult for a student body where plus 90% go to colleges throughout the nation to do something that might deter their ability to get into college or to compete for scholarships. And when a school system earns over $33 million in scholarships with a little bit over 500 students, they're doing a lot of good things. They're obviously very successful. So you just don't throw things out that are working really well, but how can we set up policy that would give students some additional freedoms to do things that might be more relative to the experiences they need to have in college? So it's difficult sometimes to, for a student that might lower a GPA by taking a certain class, that then affects their standing in class rank, and it affects scholarships and college. So we all recognize that, and that's important. So this part of the conversation about policy is making sure we adhere to what we know is important, but provide opportunities for our students. The next thing I would say, in addition to policy, is practices. And I would sum up the practice of instruction this way, we want to make sure that grades and assessment equal learning. We know grades are important. We know assessments are important. That's how you get national merit scholars, that's how you get $33 million in scholarship offerings, 90% of kids going to college, we know it's important. But that we connect and make sure that the learning going on actually equals the grade. And that's a challenge as educators that we're all trying to get better at doing. And the last thing I would say is partnerships. We have a great partnership through the Academy of Craft Training with our building associations throughout this region. Wouldn't it be great if we had those opportunities for a lot of different areas that are even for collegegoers? We know that there's a K-12 STEM strategy we need to develop to have in place. That is where the market is driving business and employment, and so we want to be aware of those things. So that's going to require partnerships, and we want to tap into the unparalleled community support we have by adding to the partnerships that may look like the Academy of Craft Training. And this goal, by the way, has implications about our facilities. So if we want to provide things for students, we have to look at our current capital plan, and how do we shape buildings and classrooms and things that will open the door to do this? Otherwise, the policy you have and the practice you have, you don't have a place to do it. So we have to be mindful of that as well. The second goal is to embrace our leadership role and develop the common understandings and shared community support for confronting the problems and challenges that impact the system, youth, and families. This one received probably the most attention of all things we did as part of this process is that our students do very well academically, but like every other adolescent in America, they have challenges and stresses placed on them. In fact, I think we all recognize in a high-performing school system, those challenges can be elevated to a new level when you're competing for college and you're competing for rank and all those things that come with the fact that we are in an educated community where high expectations are important. Those stresses can look different. It's not the stresses perhaps of poverty, although some of our students deal with that, but what are the results of things that this atmosphere can create, and how can we best support our students? So three ways I would capture that. The first one is connection, that making sure that our students feel the safe connection they need to feel at school, that they have people that they can connect with, that we really understand what the needs are. Every educator in this room and in our system will tell you that it's not the Xs and Os of the game, it's the relationship that we have with our students. That is what is the difference-maker to make goal one work, is to have the appropriate relationship. We also recognize that with those connections, we've got to realize that there are some things that we cannot necessarily do all by ourselves. And so, we know that there is a growing, and has been for many years, mental health crisis in America. And if you think about the way that we handled the drug war in the 1980s, which was like a zero-tolerance thing, I don't know that we handled that right or wrong, but we have a real different look in society today about mental health, because we don't want to think about punishment, we want to think about prevention. It's really different than that mindset that we took on as a nation with the drug wars way back. And so, we're thinking so much about preventative measures, and we know that there are mental health crises, we know that suicide rates continue to increase for adolescents, and that's going to continue to happen, and it happens in high-performing systems like it does anywhere else. We do not have the capability today to actually serve all of our students the way we need to in the aspects of mental health support. So we're wanting to do more in our schools with training and having staff more qualified to do it, but we recognize that the community is real important here, and we know that partners like Impact are really important to us. We know that our churches are important to us. And what we want to do, which is my third point, is communication, is that we have a community conversation that we embrace and lead, but that we don't dictate to our community how they address mental health, because churches have a different way, that they do it. Impact has a different way. But we want to be a coalition and a community that says together that we recognize it in our own space, we want to be able to address what we know is a war that's happening that brings our students and our adults. That's our second goal. Our third goal is strengthen leadership, management, and staffing systems committed to advancing the mission, beliefs, and goals of the strategic plan. And I would tell you that this has to be strong in order for these things to take place. It's the one that wraps around these two things. And so, the idea of systems thinking is that, not that everybody does the exact same thing, but we are thinking of what's important in terms of making goals one and two happen. And so our leadership processes, our management processes, they're all moving in the same direction. This is not taking autonomy away, it's just thinking systemically, K-12, how we do all the things we need to do to make these two things work. The next thing I would say in my three points is from systems is support. And there's much conversation, particularly in focus groups of teachers, about the need to make sure that we have a system-wide support network in place, i.e. professional development, so that everyone is pointing toward these things. One of the great benefits of working here, our teachers will tell you, is they can do whatever professional development they want. We have the resources, the means to allow them to do that, but it can become a weakness if we don't have some consensus of what we're trying to prepare for. And so we know that we want to focus professional development in these areas. And several years ago, this system committed to what we call professional learning communities, and that we have that in place in a robust manner in all of our schools. I would tell you that a couple of schools have schedules created well for it. Some of our other schools are beginning to look at how they create schedules that allow teachers to spend time together in professional learning and grow, because that is the difference-maker, we believe, in providing support. So we know that that's an area we've got to look at in terms of how we create conditions for the schools to have professional learning communities, and that they can take off with that notion. And then the final thing is that we pay attention to staff. And in an age where it's getting more and more difficult to get teachers to, or to get college students to become teachers, we want to make sure we stay at the top of the heap in terms of who wants to be a part of our system. And so, much of the work that Meredith is doing this year has to do with retention and induction of our teachers. We want to make sure we're getting the very best that represent the diversity of Vestavius Hills City Schools. We want to have the very best stay with us. Right now, retention level's about 85%, I think, from year to year, and that's a good number. Our average age of teacher experience is about 12 to 13 years, and that's a good number as well. We want to stay in that vein, but we want to continue to up the game. And the second part of that is how we best support our teachers, because they too need to be well and they need to be safe. And so we want to make sure we create a school system that is so beloved by our staff that they wouldn't want to leave, because it's not necessarily the job, it's how we treat them and how we lift them up and help them grow professionally and help them be safe in their environment. So it's a big picture of three things, but that gives you really an essence of what a picture of success would look like if we were to lay this all out. What happens after this, there's a few things I wanted to mention to you, this sort of begins to morph into some of my goals for this year, is that we have an organizational support in our office. I didn't really want to use the word organizational charge, because it needs to really always be fluid, but there needs to be a support in place for our schools to do their work. And this is what ours looks like. We've worked on this for about a year to get exactly where we wanted to go, but basically we have two divisions as part of our central office, teaching and learning, and operations and services. And Dr. Rainey, this is her division, and inside her division she has several departments and their directors in several areas. And what we feel like we've done in this team is we've put some real skill sets together that have varied experiences in different fields that can complement the work of teaching and learning. Student services, that's for years been here, and we have moved it into teaching and learning. And I think that's an appropriate place, because the connection of one goes one and two. And so this team is assembled, ready to go. This is Dr. Martin's team. And what you'll see here are, it's basically been this way for this year with a couple of things. I have on the agenda tonight a job description that we're preparing for director of maintenance. Mr. Blue's been doing maintenance director for a long time, but he's not got that title. But we're trying to get, there's a lot of things in our organization, we're trying to make sure it's consistent. So that's a job description we're looking at, and others administrator supporting programs. And that is basically, it's somewhat of a catch-all of a lot of things in operations and services that we need some additional support areas in. After-school is one of those things that would be a part of that job description in addition to various other things in operations. So this is what the makeup looks like. I want to make you aware of a couple of changes, or one change that I made in particular is wit. I've learned that I'm the only person who can control wit.
Narrow road, high ground.
Yeah, not really true, but Wit and I spend the majority of our time together, and I feel like because of the goal about communication, with the second goal of communication on social-emotional support, is that that work will only grow. We are doing a lot of things to try to ramp up our communication effectiveness with our community. And so, he and I spend most of our time together, and that's a natural thing to do. Of course, the principals are under my supervision, you see the rest of this. Now, you'll notice, Ms. Brown, as you know, is the employee of the board. You hire the CFO, you do contract CFO, and they work under supervision of superintendent, so that's how that works. You have questions on?
The only thing I'd like to point out, it's how I really like, is the director of technology moving into teaching and learning.
Yes.
I think over the past few years, that's been, you know, technology's moved from that thing around, are we keeping all the lights blinking green?
Yeah.
To how do we use that as a part of instruction? So I think the tendency in most organizations is to bury that over on the operational side of the house, but by moving it into the teaching and learning side, I think, A is, in my opinion, aggressive, but two, I think, absolutely the right place for it.
Yeah, and thank you for mentioning that, that made me think about. A job description that's on the agenda tonight, just for review, is an assistant director of technology. We won't be adding staff, we'll be doing some work within staff, but the sole purpose is to allow the director to spend more time in the instructional house, which I think is important.
Right.
So we have somebody that can technically handle infrastructure-type things. Because really, when you put the skill sets together, this team here, they bring a lot of different backgrounds, and he brings a STEM background that helps us in our thinking about that first goal. And so we want him to be a part of this.
Yeah.
Dr. Cooper, who's new back there, I don't know if you've met him yet, but there he is. You hired him last month. Dr. Cooper is one of our directors of instruction curriculum, but he'll also be doing career technical and other federal programs. And so, it's good to have that body of experience to help with that initiative that we're moving forward with some of that. Thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, welcome, Dr. Cooper.
Yeah.
He already wants to be in your office.
Yeah. All right, so moving forward, what do we do at this point? This is something that's getting used to for me as part of strategic planning, was the notion of planning as opposed to developing action steps in a strategic plan. We did that in 2013. This whole process was about getting to goals. What now is that we develop action plans to make the goals work, and that we look at the outcomes to see how we're doing. We have measurable outcomes. So one of the first things I do is charge from here upon your approval of the goals, is we start developing these teams that will focus in on specific areas of the plan, start putting action steps in place. And so we'll be doing that, and we'll be also developing measurable outcomes. And I will tell you, some parts of the goals are quantifiable, some are qualitative, so there's a mix of what happens there. But from my perspective, that will be my first charge, is to start putting these in place for the board. The next thing is, as part of the third goal, is to make sure that we have operational plans in place that address long-term thinking. And I will tell you, this is a place where we're going to be thinking about planning and not a plan. I don't want to use it as you used a while ago, just exactly, what did he say? You can say.
Mike Tyson said, "Everyone has a plan till I punch him in the face." Right. Which the other, the military phrase for that is like, you know, "No plans survive first contact with the enemy," or whatever, but, you know. But, you know, it's the idea that you can have all the plans you want, but subchained answers.
So it's a fluid process, and that's why our goals look the way they do, but in terms of planning long-range, there are a few things we need to be thinking about, our student enrollment trends. We spent the last five years dealing with growth, but how do we look at that going forward? What our resources are currently, do we have? All of our academic arts and athletic programming, what does that look like as we're planning ahead? This one over here is facility needs. And all that's a part of a strategy of planning for the future. But as Ms. Brown will tell you, I can develop a lot of plans, but we're going to make sure we can finance the things we need to do. So we want to have a creative approach to how we look at financing all of the operational things that we're doing moving forward. I really think for the time being, enrollment has steadied itself the last three years. It's not moving near the rate our demographer said it would, and that's okay with me. And I think that's probably okay with the high school principal and middle school principals, where we've been really crowded. So that's steadied enough for us to begin to look at these other things about the current school plan that we have. So that's something that I will work on this year as well. Please.
End of presentation.
Is that it? No, I've got a couple more. Next thing is with goal three, leadership and management systems. And what I would refer to in the leadership concept is what we call Rebel Lead, which is a look at leadership from top to bottom in our system. And I believe it's a very important goal of the superintendent, when you have capable staff, which we do, to focus on growing leadership all the way throughout the system. We have had a very strong teacher leader program for many years, and so we want to take some model pieces of that and begin to look at our current administrative team, our central office, assistant principals, our principals, those who have administrative certificates that want to become administrators, those within the ranks of our administrators who want to move up in positions, those who are in the classroom who we want to become administrators. There's a whole vein of leadership that we want to think about with this concept. And so Rebel Lead will begin to take shape this year. Different parts of us, of this team, will be working on Rebel Lead. But the whole idea is where we are leading is to raise our bar of leadership effectiveness. And the last thing is more specific to me, and that's developing executive leadership skills or enhancing those. And so a lot of this is based on feedback I receive from the board through evaluation. All of it essentially is to be responsive to things that you want me to focus upon, which is community collaboration, communication skills, visioning, and digital integration. Some of that you didn't necessarily say, but I wanted to be consistent with the things we're trying to do within our goal, our strategic planning goal. So you have more specifically the reading of each goal in your documents, but I wanted to make sure I weave that into this whole strategic planning conversation. So I'll take questions from you now, if you got.
Questions for Mel? Questions? You're a person, all this, Jennifer. I thought the process was really well done. The, in particular, I thought the commentary from our students was really interesting. Interesting in a good way, you know, is that they were, they talked a lot about things that, you know, they loved, things that could be a little better, but they also talked about some things that like students could do differently and engage more and stuff like that, and how that whole idea of getting caught up in just the pursuit of the grade, and I don't really remember anything, but I got an A on that test. Some of that kind of stuff came out, so it was, I thought it was great. And that the open discussion from all the different people in that room, including the students, when the students talked, everyone listened, that YF HUT kind of, for those here who are too young to remember, there's a commercial called YF HUT, when you talk to people, listen. But I thought that whole part was really great, to hear from them and include them, and not include them and kind of check the box, we talked to some students, but to include them in a meaningful way, I thought was really great.
The pictures of success that you have reaching this, you'll see weaved in their student voice. I think that's important. We learned a lot. We want to make sure we're intentional about keeping them involved in all conversations.
It was a good process. It was a taking stock process. So it wasn't exactly what I thought it was going to be, because I'm a pencil, paper, write a plan. But it was a good experience of what the community, what business owners thought, what business owners needed out of students coming out of college and high school, how our kids thought they were prepared for high school or not prepared in college and workforce. It was a good group of well-rounded people in the way that I thought.
I think it warrants mentioning that we had some business leaders from, you know...
We had people that didn't have children in the system. We have Blue Woods, nearly business owners. We had an army general who did a lot of Vestavia.
Some of the construction industries.
In construction, business, finance, mental health. And then we had parents, too, people gave different perspectives on different things. I learned a lot, how to integrate education and children's mental health and parenting.
Well, I reflected back to when we were interviewing Dr. Freeman, and I was eating a Felder and waffle and crispy bacon, always where you're making crispy. And as if there's another way, let's be honest, right? And I pointed out to him and said, "Look, the, you know, our community has parents that care," right? And so if you're a competent superintendent, parents that care is an asset you can leverage the right way. If you're not competent, parents that care are a snoopy bunch of meddling people, right? And so if you can point the parents that care the right direction, then we can accomplish lots of great stuff. And so he was like, "Oh, I'm equal to that task." And watching this way the strategic plan planned out, our parents that cared were on display, and we had a direction to point them, and man, they were all on board. And so that's a great thing.
With our action teams, we'll continue to tap into some of that group, because when we start digging into the weeds of different goals, and that's where their experience really gets.
They care, they want to help, and yeah.
Any other? As we move on and start implementing this, do we have something in place for the teachers to respond back? I mean, in the workforce, you run through things like this a lot, and something's put into place, and then everybody's on board, and it's great and wonderful and stuff like that.
How do you keep them out of behind?
But then there's somebody who's like, "You know, I got a different idea, and I want to tell somebody." And sometimes they're scared to say anything, just for the fact that it's not exactly what's printed in black and white, if that makes sense. So I guess my question is, do the teachers and administrators have a way to provide feedback comfortably?
My answer to that would be in our measurable outcomes. That should be a factor in, are we doing the things in a picture of success that we want to be doing? And if we're not, what do we need to, how do we need to think differently? The survey we use at the end of the year with our whole entire staff probably needs some look to make sure it's more specific to our goals and not as general as some of those things are. Because our principals really use those surveys in relation to their goals, that's a big part. So it needs to look in a way that helps them to know if they're on track. And the third thing I would say is, while I don't know that we tackle this one this year, our evaluation process needs to have the theme of the goals in place, so we know if we're using some evaluation tool, it should be evaluating based on what our goals are. And that's a bigger type thing, but that would be how we should be addressing that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it's kind of set up so that the schools own the action plans. So it's not like the central office or the board or anybody dictates a plan. My understanding was, here's the goals, and then the schools go off and work. For my school, this is what my action items are to meet this goal.
I think that is the art of this systems process, that it doesn't become top-heavy, that it's an organic thing, that we collectively have a notion. But the beauty of our system in a lot of ways has been the ability of our principals to manage their schools and lead their schools with some autonomy. So we give them the overarching ideas and go with it.
Strategy and tactics.
So the kids that were involved in this, how will we measure the outcome of them? Like in the long run? Are we getting back with those students again?
Yeah, you know, I tell you, one of the deficit pieces we've got in K-12 right now is the ability to track students when they leave and their success rate. I know some things, generally speaking, like 80% of our kids who go to college finish in six years, which is the measure of college issues, that's really good compared to national and state standards. But I don't really know into the work field, into the workplace, that's a moving target for us, we don't really have. The eight we interviewed, some are still in school. And so I think, and they're probably a part of the leadership class, could be my guest, I heard, I would assume, I think they'll be helpful in those conversations. How are things looking from when we started this conversation last year?
Yeah, and a lot of that, I remember talking to somebody, a lot of the problem that struggles a lot, that would have to be self-reported, right? So asking a student, I think in-state, we can gather a lot of that data, if they go to Alabama and Army stuff, but if they go out of state, how do we, how do we get that reported back? And so a student has to manually go in and enter that in some kind of portal, which is hard. Yeah. Any other questions or commentary? Okay. Do you have any questions?
I will. I'll go into new business. Item A, I recommend the board approve the strategic plan, system goals, as submitted.
Yes, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. We've had the discussion. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now the riveting part, pest control and plant supplies. I've been waiting for this, really, this whole week.
Item B, I recommend the board approve the low bid from Knox Pest Control for Pest Control Services, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, we all know that pest control is legitimately very important.
It's the fourth D.
Do you have any questions, commentary? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have the contract for the item?
Yes, I recommend the board approve the contract between Knox Pest Control and the Board for Pest Control Services, as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation for the contract for the pest control, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, I recommend the board approve the low bid from RICA Sales and Services Incorporated for Custodial Cleaning Supplies, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
And this is, talk about this today, this is sourcing products and...
Yes, talk, would you share with the board what you're doing with this item and the next one?
Sure. Sure, we started to have conversation back winter, early spring, about centralizing the purchase for custodial supply. And so we had conversations with principals, and then started to survey some of the custodians, those individuals that do the purchasing at the different schools, and then have gone through the process of bidding those items. And so these next two items are going to allow us to go through that process. The positives from this, the custodial staff will allow for some training, uniformity across the system, and we're also hoping for some cost savings based on purchasing system-wise.
Aggregating all the demand.
That's right.
There's a grain component, too, that's a part of this, making sure we've got healthy tools, and that we've got, when you centralize the process, you have a better idea of what's in the buildings, being cleaning and so forth.
Who does that come to, Dr. Martin? Who will requisition and write POs that will come through our office here?
Yes, and will collaborate with bookkeepers as well as custodians at each school.
The shipments all go to the schools.
Yeah, that's right. Got it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, I recommend the board approve the contract between RICA Sales and Services Incorporated and the Board for Custodial Cleaning Supplies, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, I recommend the board approve the low bid from AAA Environmental for Custodial Paper Supplies, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I didn't know if Dr. Martin wanted to talk about custodial paper supplies or not.
Become an expert on float tissue.
It was like, single ply or two ply?
At one point over the weekend, Dr. Freeman said, "I need to get off the phone now."
Two ply, right?
I'm going down the tunnel right now.
He said, "Three ply on those splinters."
That was really my only reply. Item G, I recommend the board approve the contract between AAA.
Did you have? Did you? No, that was a question we had. All in favor? All right, next.
Item G, I recommend the board approve the contract between AAA Environmental and the Board for Custodial Paper Supplies, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Some samples would have been really nice here. I'm just saying.
See how it's moving?
All right, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, I recommend the board approve the owner-architect agreement between Lathan Associates Architects and the Board in the amount of $200,000 for paving improvements at Lewis Positz Middle School, Vestavia Hills Elementary, Liberty Park, and Liberty Park Middle School, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Approve some?
Yeah, we had a, we had an assessment done during the spring of all things asphalt in our system. We have some priority areas, but because of the nature of things we may be doing next year, Positz and Liberty Park, Positz was a priority, Liberty Park was probably not as high, but it's a good opportunity to take care of their needs next summer. So this just begins to work that plan.
We're going to put that sealed asphalt in Positz again, Meredith, for Rainey, you can't get up the, hang it up the hill.
Be Rainey back there.
That was your guy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item I, I recommend the board approve an owner-architect agreement between Lathan Associates Architects and the Board in the amount of $300,000 for interior renovations to the library at Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dollar Ridge.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Next three are all about library. Is what we're really seeing here a lot of library envy with Dr. Huntsburg?
I'm afraid so.
A little bit of library envy for Huntsburg.
Maybe some unrealistic expectations.
Well, well, Alicia.
Your library is really nice. Let's be honest, it's really...
What we did with I, J, and K is to purposely put those three together. We knew that for some time with East and West having new cafeterias, there was some space that we could do some things with, and I really just wanted to hold off until we could put all three together. I think the strategic plan completion was important, because the principals need to be aware of how they may think about their spaces in terms of making some of those things a reality. So this year gives us the opportunity to do that and tackle those projects next summer.
So that's the idea, use this year to come up the vision?
We'll start.
Summer to...
We'll start in August, designing with our principals, and the idea would be to bring a bid to in the spring.
Heard, we've already, motion is seconded, commentary? Motion to approve?
So moved.
No, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item J, I recommend the board approve the owner-architect agreement between Lathan Associates Architects and the Board in the amount of $300,000 for interior renovations to the library at Vestavia Hills Elementary East, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's free went down, like, uh-oh. Motion to place the agenda back on its free.
Item K, I recommend the board approve the owner-architect agreement between Lathan Associates Architects and the Board in the amount of $300,000 for interior renovations to the library at Vestavia Hills Elementary West, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item L, I recommend the board approve change order number three with Nerea Construction Company LLC in the amount of $20,409 for a new classroom addition at Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dollar Ridge, as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.[1720.66]
Second?
Second.
Questions, commentary?
And who? I can share that. It's the drive that's adjacent to the new addition. Originally, the school that project was for gravel and asphalt.
Would you, for some time, would we do this and we hedged that the bid on the new parking and paving would be with the same contractor? We got it, that was, you know, we were fortunate for that, so it made this the time to go ahead and do the change order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item M, I recommend the board approve the 2019-20 salary schedule as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve the 30-something-page salary schedule?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or commentary? It's standard every year.
It is. One thing we did this year, I asked Mr. Donaldson last year to make sure that we had all supplements, monies that were being paid to employees are part of the schedule. We have had over the years, some supplements paid directly from the school or department areas that the board possibly requires you to approve all paid, and so that it is reflective of that this time.
Instead of having that separate schedule that we've had.
Well, you didn't actually see some of it.
Yeah.
And so we put it out confidentially together.
Awesome. Any other questions?
I just want to thank the principals for taking such a huge reduction this year. We helped.
That's right. So that we can do the next item.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, so the, we need to take a vote on the superintendent's salary increase based on the state mandated increase, let's just be appended to his current agreement. Do we have a motion to, I can't make that motion, so do we have a motion to increase the superintendent's salary based on the mandate?
Yes, I'm motioning.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? It's formality?
Would you, yeah, would you, Mitch Brown, explain why this appears in the manner it does?
Because the act says that the board must approve it. It's, you know, automatic mandate for teachers, but for the superintendent, it doesn't have to be, so we need board approval to authorize that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next few items require no action tonight. The first is update on job descriptions, and you will see that there are four this evening that Hanson has put together, through some collaborative efforts, and these will lay on the table for a month. We'll get the appropriate feedback. I'll bring that to you in the form of a recommendation next one.
No action required?
No. Item P, this is information only as well. I wanted to provide for you school fees for the 1920 year, and I'd like to say the principals have provided all that to us, and I want to commend them for the continued efforts to standardize fees to the extent possible across the system. Dr. Burgess, in particular, has taken a strong interest the last two years in reduction of fees in certain areas. Dr. Burgess, anything you want to add to that? You can see it, and he gave you a nice comparison in that chart.
Yeah, we were asked several years ago to take a better look at that and audit our process, and I think we've put a good effort in that in two years. I think it's an ongoing thing. Hopefully every year, we'll be able to look at our accounts, how healthy they are versus the fees that are paid into them, and then how we're spending those fees throughout the year. And so when we actually take a look at it, I think we can do better by our families on this front. And so I think it was a call to action, and I feel like we're meeting that.
We collectively, we all agree that that can be a limit to the performance of our mission, and so I appreciate their work and.
Yeah, if I could. So Dr. Baker couldn't be here tonight, and she has me to say on her behalf, thank you. This was important to her, and she said, you know, align to our learning without limits, and sometimes the fees can be limiting. And so she knows that it's had a lot of work to go into each one of those little curricular, extracurricular things and look at that. So she wanted to express her gratitude for all the work that y'all put in to do that. It is meaningful and significant, and she totally appreciates that.
Item Q, this is information only as well, and it is around the student extracurricular drug testing procedure. I would like Dr. Martin to just share with you what has been done this summer in response to some needs to relook at that particular procedure that's in place, the policy mandates drug testing for extracurriculars, and this is the procedure part of it, so I just wanted you to hear from him when the work's been done.
I've provided three items for you and the board packet relative to this procedural change. The first item shows our numbers for this year, what we look at in terms of overall testing, positive results for tests. The first item, or the second item there, you can see is a summary page. We had a chance to meet over the course of two different times with students and parents, it was a committee of students' parents, board of education member, our medical review officer joined us as well, school administrators, and then building administrators as well. And you can see the recommendations that were made. What we were looking to do was really bring practice into alignment with what the, what really procedure into alignment with what the practice that was being done, also in the spirit of prevention and support that Dr. Freeman spoke to earlier. And you can see the recommendations there. One of the recommendations made, actually, it was around conversations that some of the students were having, was to increase from 20% of this activity students tested to 40% of the activity students that would be tested. And so I've provided some numbers for you there of what that increase would be. The next is really cleaning up the language to fall in line with practice. We are now using an oral swam to test students, and that was not included in our procedure. And so we did a lot of cleanup to make sure that was stated. Section J discussed request for retest, and that was a section by the committee, a recommendation was made to now allow students to retest. If they test positive that initial time, that would be the test that would stand. And so that was one of the changes. And then again, going back to prevention and support, having a incentive, a support incentive for students, and I've included the language in there for you as well to read what that would look like. It would allow a student who tests positive that first time to go through, we call it the activity student support incentive, and they would go through some training, some counseling along with their parents, and hopefully set them on a more proper course in their middle school and high school years, stopping some of these behaviors that we're trying to push aside. And then they would stop at that consequence on their consequence track, and then moving forward, if, you know, they would start back at that initial consequence. So I've laid that out for you there. The third portion of this, which is the current procedure with all recommended changes.
The procedure we appreciate about this is the spirit of any policy such as this is to limit or eliminate a behavior from occurring. And if it's strictly a procedure that is reactive and punishing, there may not be things in place that can help be preventative. And so I like the approach that's been taken to this. Mayor Miss Cook, I know that you are passionate about it from his council's perspective, it's something worth attending to. We'll discuss in a few minutes, Miss Bailey will, about the discipline report this year, but it's something this committee took seriously, I think, and made some very prudent changes to make the policy, the spirit of the policy, I think, come alive. Do you have any comments? Your partner, Drew?
That was a good job. I mean, we cleaned it up. Our policy has to reflect what we actually do, and that's what we set in place here.
Very good work. No action required on it, can make sure you were aware of that. The final item is an information only, but the State Department requires that we provide you the student incident report each year, and as I want to preface some comments from Miss Bailey, is that school incident report that we call SIR is not inclusive of every discipline infraction that occurs in a system. Miss Bailey can explain to you what actually happens that triggers one of these, because some of the data that you see is a bit confusing, so we'll make some note of that. But it's inclusive of only the things that are triggered when it becomes an SIR, so just knowing that, I'd like to introduce our new Director of Student Services, Jennifer Bailey, who you know well, and she's, I gave her an assignment the day after you appointed her, and I had to get this report ready. Here goes.
So you may, Dr. Freeman quoted the SIR, you might also hear it referred to as the SER report. And before I even talk about it at all, keep in mind that it is just one data point that we look at. And so some of the information may cause student questions, and we can explain that certainly, but other information that we would want to look at would be our pride survey, that our students give information about drug and alcohol use, we get an idea about culture in our schools. And another might be our school-based information on discipline, you know, what offenses have students committed, and then what was that local consequence that was administered? And as we dug into these consequences, and I even talked with the high school admin team about it, our school principals and administrative teams are very consistent in how they administer consequences. And the last slide, as Dr. Rainey and I were talking about, is sort of a crescendo, and I felt like really good information in regard to absenteeism and our efforts to really keep kids in class. So without, without further ado, this is just information about this report. Like Dr. Freeman said, this is something that we're required to report to you, and again, it's just one piece of data that we look at. I'll kind of scoot this way if you don't mind. You'll see that our trends sort of are consistent in terms of alcohol possession, assault, the defiance and disobedience, that has dropped, and then we looked at the 17, 18, and why that might have been an outlier, and we think that just has something to do with the way that we coded that.
Is this all students or high school?
This is all students. This is district-wide, this is all of our schools. And some of those numbers, are you thinking those seem kind of low?
Yeah, so I had a question, Mike, if I look at the tobacco possession, mostly because I just said only.
Sure, you're right, and the drug possession.
Can you explain how, if we catch a kid vaping, how it's not an SIR versus it is an SIR?
I sure can, and anyone else who wants to jump in, please do. What that, this is what is reported to the state, and it is a higher consequence, like an alternative school, an out-of-school suspension, or it is something more significant. When we looked at our high school consequences, for example, though, they're administering Saturday detention for those students. And so that is the consequence that the students who have tobacco possession, that's what they do in response to that.
So the thresholding is not the offense, the thresholding is the consequence?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Which you basically have to work your way up to, right?
You do, and so there were a couple that were, or there was one that was coded in the SER report, but that's because it was something plus. It was tobacco use plus, being deceptive with the school board employee. So that's what that is. So the local schools within our board policy have discretion on how to administer those consequences, and like I said, they're very consistent at every school, but that's why that shows up that way. I had the very same question. I thought this is not, does this have to do with vaping? Is it, you know, what is, what is the criteria there?
So there's vaping all under the tobacco realm?
It does, it does. That's the way that we've been coding that. And then I had the same question about unauthorized absence, and it's the same explanation, is how that consequence has been administered. And so that's what that is. So those four, those would have been significant or repeats, that would have been out-of-school suspension or something like that, or alternative school. Any questions about that? And I'm glad to go through any of these. One thing that we have talked about, and it will be interesting to begin tracking data, we just finished our first year of CI3T implementation, the behavioral, academic, social, emotional prevention and intervention support in every school. So it will be interesting to see how that implementation can be tracked and is impacting our data. You know, are we seeing results? Dr. Freeman talked about measurable outcomes. We want to be measuring the things that we're doing. It will be interesting to see how, if and how that's impacting these numbers.
Do you track how many of these are multiple offenders?
Yeah, we can pull that in, talkable, we can do that at each school.
Like your 10 might only be, your 10 for drugs might only be five kids.
Sure.
And I would do, I want to make the point here, that it is an incident report, and so where you see fighting, for example, that's an incident, it could have involved 10 students.
Yeah.
That's not a student identified as an incident.
Mm-hmm.
So Jennifer, unauthorized absence, did you say it's being coded differently now? Because we've got four years of fairly consistent numbers and then a huge drop this past year.
Yeah, we actually talked about that specifically, and it's the way that they might have received an, like, in-school suspension is something that's reported here, but a Saturday school is not. So if a student was skipping, for example, and they assigned a Saturday school, then that will not show up here. But like, we looked at that data, and straight down, it says Saturday detention, Saturday detention. So that's what that looks like. And to ruin my surprise at the end, my committee, we have, you'll see a trend toward students being in class more. There's not as much out-of-school suspension, so, which I think is a credit to our administrators.
That's a big one, too, because that's part of the federal report card.
Yeah.
That gets everybody's attention.
And these are just graphic representatives, just bar graphs of the data that we're looking at, so that you just have a visual for how those trends, for what they look like. And, but you're already pointing out, we have the 45, and then it drops. So that's what those look like, again, unauthorized absence. Really, things are pretty consistent. We were really, this, I thought I wanted to look at what the possession trends would be, alcohol, drugs, and then tobacco. We saw a real significant dip, I'm trying to get American off the screen. We had a real significant dip in the tobacco possession, but again, it's how the consequences are administered. So it may just be that they're more consistently keeping kids in class, but letting them spend their time on Saturday, so.
Can we, you don't have to do it in this meeting, can we see it with all the infractions?
Absolutely.
Because this paints a, it's a key picture.
Well, it's just a, it's just a piece, you know, it does, I agree with you. And I, in fact, I wrote that note earlier. I want us to gather all of that data, and I absolutely will provide that for you.
Because if kids need to be out of school or in our alternative school, they need to be in out of school.
Sure, sure.
And so I'd kind of like to see how many.
And when they are there, it is for good reason. So yes, I will pull all of that data, and we'll look at it. And that's something that I want to do with principals at the beginning of the year, just taking off, sitting down with them and looking at their data and how that aligns with their goals. Those are behavior trends, again, you know, based on the consequences. This one has to do with defiance and disobedience, profanity. We saw some drops, some real significant drops in those things. I think, too, teachers are handling those in class differently, and then I think that the administrators, again, are giving students consequences. That is consistent across the board, but they're also being mindful of the academic component. And so this is the consequences that are reported, and if you see, there's, you know, just a lot of consistency across the board, district-wide, and how those have been coded and administered. So we're in line there. But then I felt like this was something that was really significant, because absenteeism is something that we are held accountable for, something that locally is very important to us. If students are not in class, then they're not getting the instruction they need, and if they're missing class, it's contributing to anxiety and mental health issues, if they're trying to catch up and they're too far behind, it's very layered. But the fact that they're in school, being supervised as a consequence of discipline infractions bodes well for their academics.
So remind me, does out-of-school classes and absence, if you put them in out of school, but if they're in alternative school, they're considered enrolled and?
That's right, that's right.
Have we seen, we put in a program to shorten the time that a kid was in out of school before they got to alternative school, is that shown to work?
Yeah, it has. It's fewer days or fewer class hours that they miss that are unexcused.
Right.
And that unexcused, they can't make that work up for them.
So it's like I was saying earlier, the purpose of discipline is change behavior.
It is, it is.
And so this is less punitive, I would suspect, and probably more towards changing.
Well, at that point, you're penalizing them for the behavior, it's like a twofer. It's academic, it's academically punitive as well, which is not.
When you're out of school.
Right, right. So they're being punished for the consequence, and then there's an academic consequence as well, if they're out.
And we feel confident if we, if you have a kid who has a third offense vaping, no matter what school they're at, they got the same, they got the same punishment or whatever both handed up. We are executing the punitive side.
Yes.
Across the board, yes, the same.
And Dr. Rainey, when she came in, she had a meeting with administrators and, you know, and assistant principals, the whole group, and talked about those things. They looked at board policy, and of course, that's something that I want to revisit and look at ways that I can support, but yes, they, they have looked at that, and it is consistent.
Any other questions? Is Saturday school away, is it, it's not in-school or out-of-school? You keep them in school and don't make them go to in-school, but then make them to Saturday school, is that how it's done?
They made a movie about that.
Yeah.
I missed it there.
The record is boring, either.
Principal sophomore has not attended on Saturday, so, but how does it count? How does Saturday school count?
It's not counted as attendance at all. It's not counted as attendance at all.
Right, so they keep, you keep them in class instead of?
Well, it's a, it's a drop along the way of progressive discipline, so, you know, you'd have detention, and then you might have Saturday school, then you might have in-school for multiple days, then you would have out-of-school, then you have alternative school, so it's just one bump in that line.
And I think the way in which they enforce that progressive discipline is also a credit to why we're not seeing infractions.
Oh, Saturday school, we didn't like it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. But then they're not punished academically for anything else.
For my curiosity, Tyler, you get a pass.
Okay.
From the principals here, who deals with vaping in your schools? Raise your hand. Tyler, you get a pass. I'm just curious, so, middle school? Middle school?
It's the assistant principal and the principal.
No elementary? Nobody's seen it yet?
Is that what you mean when you say deal with? I mean, if we get our report.
Are you having people vaping in your school?
Yes, but I don't believe at a high level. At Liberty Park, I can't speak for the other school. We talked about this a little bit back in, back last year, and either they're really good at hiding it, or some of the things we've put in place, such as just having a teacher standing outside of the bathrooms in the change of classes, that's been a big deterrent, and kids are reporting it. So of the two, I believe, incidents we had, they were both reported on by classmates.
We had, we had one big, you know, like, breakdown, but we called it, a lot of kids, and kids told on each other, and, you know, handling that the way that we did, it kind of kept the kids from stopping, I mean, it was word on the street, you know what I mean? It was a big deal. And Tony and I talked, we talked about that some, so we did deal with it, but it hasn't been.
And to the best of our knowledge, elementary schools aren't, haven't had to deal with it yet.
Never seen it, never heard of it, thank goodness.
Not ours, but yeah, that does, yeah, it's not ours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Before public comment, I'll introduce you to two administrative positions, and we have one more this evening, Ms. Tinker.
Ms. Freeman, would you introduce your new assistant?
This is Danielle Tinker, she's the new assistant principal at Liberty Park Elementary. We are so excited to have her, she comes from Jefferson County, she was an assistant principal there for the past seven years. Before that, she was a kid, served as a kindergarten teacher. So she brings just a wealth of knowledge and experience to our school, and she's already fitting great, and just so warm, has such a strong passion for children, and you just, you see her heart on her sleeve.
Welcome to the playhouse.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Awesome, so we have come to the public comment portion. We ask you to keep your comments to the items on the agendas, take your name and address, and limit to three minutes if possible. Any? Big none, your turn.